...is meant here, but later the department, you know, shows the ZRD. And this is the ZRD which we've, I think, helpfully blown up here. Which demonstrates quite clearly that it's not about the space in between. And that's true, of course, as Michael just said, with regard to Empire Hotel. It's not about this. It's about trying to give us an envelope. Now, a lot also has been said about channel letters.
Just a question there, though. Not with the electronic sign below, but with the one above. Those are individual letters. Right. So they are counting the space in between the individual letters.
Well, yeah. Chair, it brings us a good point. The so-called "channel" letters. Well, we see this a lot. I was in East Flapish the other night and there was a Duane Reade sign. Now, when there's a Duane Reade sign, the department, of course, has to count the Duane Reade. You know, you draw -- it's only reasonable. It only makes sense to do that. When you see Duane Reade, you count Duane Reade. And channel letters, by the way, are fixed, unlike our sign, which is changeable. Channel letters don't move around, right? They're fixed. So we're not channel letters. You can't treat us like channel letters. So in an effort to draw -- I don't have the Duane Reade sign, but we've all seen these signs all over the city. So you do, in fact, and the deal sign is an example of this as well, right? Deals applied for one sign, and audit ended up being two signs, and we'll show that. But you draw a -- I'll use the word "envelope." You draw it around the Duane Reade. Because how else would you do it? It's only reasonable and it makes sense, and we're not going to go after the DLP for doing that. That's a logical way to do it. But we're not channel letters. A channel letter sign is fixed. A channel letter sign doesn't change. It doesn't move. Whereas we do. I think, let's move on.
Yeah.
This makes it clear, of course, that you don't count...
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
On the hotel Empire, the sign above, what's the total height of the sign from H -- from the top of the H to the bottom of the E?
Well, this entire thing is 22 feet. This is 8 feet, and this is 8 feet, and this has been shrunk down to 19.
Okay.
Okay. So, let's talk a little bit about monopoles and structures and, uh, and let's talk also about our sign.
That's a monopole?
This is a...
Oh, a monopole!
No, this is not exactly a monopole. It's a modified version.
It came with it.
We don't have a permit for this, but... The challenge was getting this into my office, which doesn't have the floor-to-ceiling heights we have here.
How'd you get it through the door?
So, you know, this, of course, this illustration makes it clear, this is one structure, this is a monopole, two permits.
Yes.
Now, this is...
Well, that's structures also.
We've shown this before.
I'm sorry? That's two structures added onto one monopole.
No, it's a monopole.
Why not?
No, I don't think so. I don't think so. Respectfully, Chair, I'm not -- I understand, but it's one monopole.
One monopole, two horizontal beams.
Two horizontal beams. But that's not what that counts.
And the lattice doesn't go vertically through from one sign to the other. So it looks to me like it's two structures.
Yes.
On one monopole.
Yeah, I point out, there's only one permit for it. Thank you. Only one permit for the monopole. We believe it's only -- I understand. But we believe it's only one structure, and the Department of Buildings permitted it as a single monopole and as a single structure.
Each thing then...
Right, as Michael points out. We've been doing this for a long time, and I think you can appreciate that there's some passion here and strong feelings about our...
It's important to be passionate about signs.
It is, and about zoning. The point being, you know, there's a visual representation here, which the department often speaks about that. It may appear a certain way, and goodness knows what Madison Avenue, as I said before, is going to come up with next. But once again, we have two signs, two permits, one structure. Okay? Same thing here. The structure in this case, I suppose, is the building, but we have -- the structure can't be, by the way, can't be this.
Why?
It's just draped -- well, it's draped over the building.
So what's holding that...
It has anchoring.
See, we've never been able to see what's really going on there. Is there a frame in which that's located, or is that a vinyl stretch?
No, it's a vinyl, it's a drape. You've seen, there's a lot in the city, there's a vinyl, there's a Calvin Klein sign, my favorite vinyl sign, which is right over here, you don't see. These are, um, and we've talked a lot about, you know, beverage preferences, but at the end of the day, this is a -- it may appear to be visually as a single, but it's not the point. The point here is we have three separate signs, space between them. You know, this is sort of like ours, but this is space of a different type. Those aren't structures. That's a vinyl...
Sorry, wait a second. So you're saying it's vinyl, but so how come I can see underneath? That's what I mean. Without a close-up there, I can't see what the mounting method is...
We'll make it clear. I'm sorry.
Right, because you can see shadow underneath, like a dark line underneath the top sign, for example. That's what makes me believe that it's a frame, that each of these are sitting within a frame.
Okay. I'm sure there are examples of that that we can find and you see across the city, but we'll clarify that.
Using an...
Shadow is a new term that's come up.
Vinyls.
Okay. Right.
Vinyls.
So, the top, of course, you've seen before, right? Which is multiple signs showing a certain imagery and multiple permits.
And the one on the top is definitely three individual structures. That's close to what Commissioner Shonda was referring to, where the signs are in different planes, right?
Right.
Each of them on a different, clearly a different structure.
Right. I understand, but I, you know, I think, hold that.
I'll send the anyone a bell.
This is a single structure with multiple signs. So I think, well, once again, you know, if we need to further emphasize the point, but I think there are numerous examples in the city where we have a single structure with multiple signs.
With respect to this Bay Mall sign, could you put that back? You can just lean that up against or take away one of those other signs, if it doesn't fit. Yeah, you can take, like, the Empire sign.
I'm afraid this will fall down.
So, when you say it's multiple signs, what's the surface area that was measured? Like, how was that filed? Normally you have to file a drawing of your sign. How was that filed?
I think we have the applicant for that. Do we have the applicant for the sign here?
Rich didn't make it.
Oh, Rich didn't make it.
Although, they measured it basically drawing, sorry.
You have to hold them up and say your name.
Michael Davis again for the applicant. The way those tend to be filed is, when there's something floating without color or without material, there tends to be no other way to measure it other than drawing as tight a box as one can. And so, these individual logos will be measured to sort of the tightest box one can logically draw around something that doesn't have it. But what's interesting, you'll see in a moment, is where there is a background or a color of any kind, they always measure to that border. So when, as the surface area definition includes, when there is background or color or material, they measure that background or material. When something is floating geospatially against some other facade or some other thing without a backing or material, they tend to draw some kind of a box because there's no other way to measure it.
But this is an accessory business sign, right? So...
That's true, but...
Right? No, no, no. So the question, but still, it's regulated by surface area.
That's right.
So, but my question is, when they were applying, when the mall was applying for signs, they, it's, you know, Staples moves out, another guy moves in, DXL moves out, another guy moves in. They're coming in each time, applying for a new sign?
Every time, yeah.
I think that's right. And we can have Rich Brown submit, you know, an affidavit or...
No, we'd like to see actually the sign application.
They're here, and we have them. Ann has them here.
Mm-hmm.
I think that you're looking for a bit of the drawing.
If you speak, you have to have the mic and state your name.
I'm sorry, we have, Ann McCoy, Eric Feinstein, you're looking for applications with drawings? No, we have the biz printouts.
Okay. So it's, you know, frankly, it's hard to play, second-guess all this because sign applications always have a drawing. And so that way, we understand, what are they doing? Are they adding together all these signs to make sure you're not exceeding the maximum allowable? Is this a per-establishment area to a maximum of X, right? How does this work?
Okay. So, once again, it's our belief that the monopole is a single structure. It was permitted that way, and we have two signs.
Just going back again to the accessory business sign.
Right.
It is a different standard, right? Every single establishment on the site is allowed to have a sign, right? And then there's a maximum amount. So, you know, and there's, and I guess there's a maximum amount, but every single establishment is allowed to have a sign, so you have to measure for each establishment, especially given leases. You don't want Staples stealing the frontage of its neighbors, so you have to make sure that nobody gets more than X in terms of the leasing, right?
Right.
So it's a much more complicated analysis than this.
So, you've seen the deals sign before. I, you know, I can't understand quite the point about shadows. They both seem to cast shadows. I suppose it depends on the time of day and whatnot. I think they're both roughly on the same plane, and I think if we're talking about planes and shadows, we're in kind of a murky area. But at the end of the day, we have two permits and two signs here. On audit, the department determined there were two signs and two permits.
We were talking about two structures. It was simply that the shadows help us understand that there's two structures because we don't have details.
Okay. But the point here is that in terms of issuing a permit for the sign, the department saw the sign below as counting the, you know, the outside perimeter, and looked at your first stop for savings and determined it that way. Okay? You know? And then above, the department draws a tight envelope around the channel letter signs. This is interesting, and maybe you've heard about this. This is the Corona Light or Corona Extra beer. And this, once again, is a single structure, and it has a single monopole, and it has two signs, and it has space between the signs, which the department doesn't count the space, even when, as the case here, you'll see the moon on top. Now, the Madison Avenue folks and the Corona folks decided that the phases of the moon were part of the ad, and that's supposed to be a lemon going into the... Or is it a lime? Lime.
Lime.
As you want to know about Corona. So it's a lime going in the beer. Now, if you were going to count, you know, the space between, there's 300,000 miles between us and the moon.
This is a very well-timed photograph.
It is, but I believe that the Corona folks did this, you know, they did this on purpose. So there'd be a certain time of the day when, in fact, the lime shows up this way. But the point of this is sort of, it's interesting and it's fun, and it was 74 degrees when this was taken, but the point is you don't count the space in between, even when it seems to be part of something. The end of the day, the, um, these are signs, right? And you don't count...
But these, like, this one below, are, again, separate sign structures mounted on a pole, right? I mean, there's no denying those are two separate structures. One entire frame structure supports a sign.
I would just repeat the notion that you don't, I'm not sure that structure is relevant the way we seem to be discussing it. Structure is not counted as a sign. The definition of sign says nothing about the structure. The only time you talk about the structure is in Midtown, and I pass that out. That's when you count, that's when you consider the structure part of the sign in very specific areas of the city.
No, no, it's not that it's counted as part of the measured sign. It helps us understand when we have one sign versus another. So in the case of measuring surface area, it's telling us specifically, don't include the surface area of the uprights and supports, right? But it's understanding that a sign is supported, right? And then there's a whole discussion about this monopole, because that was obviously way back when, in, I guess, '61, everyone was assuming monopoles or sign structures, right?
Ann, would you like to make a comment?
Oh. I'm sorry, Ann McCoy again. I just, in terms, every structure in the city, whether it's, and the, structure is not defined per se. Buildings are defined in the zoning resolution. It says building or other structure. Every structure in the city needs to have a permit, as do signs, individual signs need to have a permit. So with regard to the Gansaboard and the Corona, there is a single permit for the structure. So I think the points we made is there's one permit, therefore it is one structure. It's a pole that has outriggings that go one way, but it's not, it's not more than one structure in and of itself.
But when you read paragraph two or three, it tells you what to do if you have multiple, whatever, surfaces...
But these don't apply to us, respectfully, Chair, because we don't, our sign goes like this. It's not a sign that goes like this.
No, it's not that they don't apply. It helps us understand what's going on, right? In the old days, we had back-to-back, we had a monopole or some other kind of a structural system on which sometimes there were back-to-back signs, but not always. Sometimes they were triangular, sometimes they were one on top of the other. And this one says, when they're back-to-back, only count it once. But when they're one on top of the other, it actually doesn't mention it, so it sounds like you need to count it.
But neither one of these sections apply to us. Our signs aren't parallel. Our signs, this, we just don't have those kinds of signs, and so we were a little perplexed as to how, as to how these apply to us.
I actually find it confusing that that would be considered two structures because literally for the proposed sign, you could construct it similar to this, and then you would have multiple signs. If you had, instead of having it on one of those mesh kind of backgrounds and you're putting sign, 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 you could literally have two arms or five arms.
Hang it off.
And hang the signs from each arm coming off a monopole, and then you would say it was several structures.
Yeah, I completely agree, Commissioner. I don't view this, respectfully, Chair, I don't view this as part of the structure. This is the monopole, and it was permitted that way by the department. This is the, uh, this is the structure itself, not, these are just, to use the department's word, elements, I suppose. But, Michael, did you want to add something?
Okay. Michael Davis again for the applicant. To clarify, I think that it's been confusing because the only drawing you've seen of the structure to date has been that very small one blown up by the department. The actual structure is a single monopole with cross-bracings identical to what you see in Gansaboard and all the other installations. It is, in fact, not mounted on a mesh of any kind. As the crow flies, you can fly right in between all of these signs. They are, in fact, mounted completely independent of one another, and structures are always treated as a single structure, or they require individual permits. The department is quite strict about method of attachment and how you attach things. And so, in the same way as the Gansaboard installations and so many other installations inside of Times Square are on one structure, this is also on only one structure.
Is that an accurate representation of the rear of the structure?
Very close to it, yeah.
How can you say that they're all mounted independently? You see the framing, and there's three of them mounted on two, well, they're all mounted on the same framing. It's on a grid.
Oh, correct, but they're all mounted independently. They all need to be mounted independently on that grid. They can't just float on the grid. You have to mount them. Every sign needs to be mounted in some way.
The H in the History Channel is mounted just exactly like that, and so is the word "channel" or whatever, right? So I'm sorry, that's a grid.
But we're not channel letters, and so we have, each of these have an individual and distinct background. They have, they have material and color that forms that background. The only time one goes to the, quote, "drawing the box" analysis is in the event where there is no background, then you have to somehow draw, and that's done at the element level. They don't draw a box around entire things. And so you'll see on our next slide, and I think sort of instinctively understand, that when there's a background or a color, one measures to that exterior color.
Element level. Go back. So, the word "channel" is made up of a whole bunch of individual elements, you know, in the old days known as letters, right? Now, you make letters on these, on these little video displays, right? Why wouldn't those be the same collection that you draw a box around?
I understand, because that's not what the zoning resolution says, and you're not looking at content, right? There's no reference, there's no reference in the zoning resolution to elements. At the end of the day, throughout the city, when confronted with channel letters, which are fixed, which don't change, which don't move, the department does the same thing. They draw a rather restrictive envelope around them. It's entirely different from our sign, individual structures, individual signs, changeable copy. They are not channel letters. So you can't, I'm also setting aside the fact that what's happened here, this is a sign that's 50, 60 years old, the History Channel sign. It's a non-conforming sign, and it's very difficult to graph the doctrine of non-conforming signs into this discussion, but we're doing it for purposes of discussing surface area.
But that's because the non-conforming sign has to comply with a surface area analysis.
Right, and the department draws a tight envelope around them, all right? These are different from our signs. Our signs are not, are not channel letter signs. So these are examples of what our sign might look like. Individual signs with colors. You clearly go to the four corners of the sign. You're not counting, you're not doing this in this instance, right? Because there's a border around it. There's a, something that you can measure, as Michael said. Same with these two other signs.
At the same time, this entire Tiffany &amp; Co. could be on that entirety of that 9,000 square foot also.
Yes.
Well, and there'd be nothing that said we couldn't do that. Each sign would be separated from each other.
So I think that goes back to my question of the definition of the surface area, which says the representation of any figure of similar character together with any material or color forming an integral part of the display. So in this case, if this is going to splash against the entirety of that 9,700, I don't remember the exact number, then isn't it meeting that definition of the fact that it's the same material, color forming an integral part of the display that is used to differentiate this sign from some other sign?
Commissioner, no, I don't think so. And the Department of Buildings says it doesn't. And several ECB hearings, the DLP has said, these are individual signs, each must get its own permit. It does it throughout the city when it has illuminated signs that have a border between them. There's no question that we have an exact border. You can put your hand through it, all right? There's, our signs begin and they end. They don't have a, they simply don't meet that. So we can show you the various ECB cases, and we can show you examples. We've done this before, and I think at the first hearing we talked about this, but these are the various ECB cases where the Department of Buildings is being told, heck, it's one sign. Please let us have one permit. And the DOP says, no, it's two signs. You have to get two permits. And these are the cases which you've seen, and we have, we have described it so...
The multiple, I mean, I know that this is confusing, but the, the problem is the DOP, I do think, has been lost a little bit, but the multiple permit seems to have been them distinguishing between permits versus zoning, and they probably shouldn't be doing that. They seem to be distinguishing when you have something they view as a structure determines the permit, but then, then I would say that permit and zoning are the same if we're distinguishing it from the point of view of a structure. So if we go back to those three examples that you showed before, each of those, and I don't know what permitting history is on each of those, each of those is a separate sign because it's on a separate structure, and it's a separate sign from the point of view of zoning, but I'm not sure if that's how DOP has looked at it in those three examples that you had before, or for example.
I'm not sure. At the end of the day, we believe that those examples before, those monopole examples, just like ours, are a single structure. They were permitted that way. They may have a certain way that they're mounted, but technology moves forward, and perhaps the zoning resolution should, but it hasn't. It says what it says. The department has to apply the law to us just as it applies the law to everywhere else. And it's clear from the department's own ECB hearings that these cases must be treated as individual signs because they stop. There's a gap. And frankly, it isn't really about counting the structure. It isn't about the structure. The department has said repeatedly that that structure, that monopole structure, is a single structure, and it has signs on it, multiple signs on it. And that's all that we are. I, you know, I don't want to belabor this. I think we've been through, it's like, we could talk about our first hearing, this is just, this is blown up, which beer now is this? This is the Coors Light beer, right? Just, once again, a further illustration of, of the case.
See, those are, there's structure behind those signs. It's some sort of a thing to stretch the vinyl onto. Like a little frame?
But then aren't, isn't there structure behind the 27 panels? Each panel is the structure of the same way?
Michael Davis again for the applicant.
Those are the hooks, right?
They're just hooks on the building.
I mean, they're not onto one structure.
But each panel is a rectangular...
Pardon?
It looks like a mesh.
Like it's a structure.
So, these are, if I can, Michael Davis again for the applicant. I think part of the fundamental challenge is, it's really hard to reconcile how these three individual signs, each of which are at exactly their individual surface area maximums, and there are individual maximums in this district, there are also aggregate maximums in this district. So together, these three signs are individually at their maximum, just as our signs are, and together they reach their aggregate limit, just as our signs would if there were an aggregate limit in a C7, which of course there is not. The challenge is, it's very hard to rationalize how these three signs could be acknowledged as three signs, but the exact same images on a monopole with significant air gaps could somehow be defined as one, when they are in fact attached with more significance than the hooks you see here. So these are rigged onto, onto pole structures at some great expense. These are attached with hooks. It's hard to understand how this mode of attachment, which doesn't require a separate structural permit of any kind, that on a building it is three, but on a monopole, separated as the Gansaboard installation is, it would be one. It sort of strains credulity that this could be one sign in that installation and three signs here.
I'm not finding credulity strained at all. You've got a detail there that shows each one individually pin-mounted or something using some kind of a structure that stretches the canvas or the vinyl.
I don't, respectfully, I don't think those will be considered by the city to be a structure. It's certainly not the same thing as other kinds of structures like, like the monopole, but we can...
It's not stuck on. It's not a painted sign. It's not stuck on. It's actually hung, using, I don't know, if you want to give us more information about how that's hung, but it looks like a structure to me.
We can, we can go over this again. I think the Gansaboard sign, once again, is clearly a single structure. I think there's, and obviously, this is a single structure as well. There are numerous examples in the city of a single structure, whether it's a building, a monopole, something like this. At the end of the day, it's a single structure with multiple signs on it. This is not, I understand the line of questioning, but, and I appreciate that we're trying real hard to bring the DOP along here, but we just can't do it. I mean, I'm sure there were examples of, we see so many vinyl signs in the city. We'll go out and we'll find them. It's, I don't think we need to. I don't think, I don't think this is a structure. And the monopole is a structure, certainly it's a structure, but it's a single structure. And I think, as was pointed out by Commissioner Otley-Brown, perhaps, we could find multiple ways of affixing the signs to the single structure, but those individual ways of doing it aren't themselves the structure. The structure is the monopole, which comes out of the ground, is the monopole. So respectfully, I'm trying to bring myself to...
The structure isn't just the monopole. The structure is the horizontal element, that horizontal and additional vertical elements that support the sign, right? The monopole just gets you high, but then you have to put the sign onto something, right?
Michael, sorry.
Michael Davis again, and respectfully, trying to make sure I understand the chair's, the chair's question.
Supports.
The supports and the uprights are perpetually ignored by the definition of surface area.
The surface, yes.
Because for the purpose of a sign, one is allowed to change the mode of attachment of a sign at any time when it's located in a certain geospatial plane. And so, they can be attached in any way one chooses. If there were a building built here in the future, you could move these signs onto the facade of that building, once they were permitted and they'd be then grandfathered as permitted signs. And so I don't think it's easy to come to the conclusion that this is not a structure and that each of these don't need to be individually supported. There may be an underlying structure that holds all of them, but the method of attachment of each and every one of these individual signs is as complicated minimally as the straps that hold another sign to a building. They are in fact structures. They're on one structure. And we know because the, the riggers are going to charge us for them individually. They're expensive. And so there's no question that these are in fact mounted on structures. There may be another structure behind it which carries the underlying structural permit, but just as in the Gansabord, there are multiple examples throughout the city of monopole installations which carry individually permitted signs, which are attached to only one permitted structure.
I just, I don't, you don't need to belabor the point. I think you understand that our, our, our position on this, I think, is very clear and supported by, I think, the facts and by the, the department's own, uh, review of the zoning resolution. Um, I, if I may, I think we've done an exhaustive job.
You have.
All of us here. And we have all tried to sort of, as the chair, I think, put it the other day, bring the DOB along and, uh, I think we recognize the issues here. Uh, this is the only C7 zone in the city outside of Coney Island. Our client is entitled to the flexibility inherent in the C7 zone. I think we're all aware that the C7 zone has the most liberal sign regulations in the city. We adhere to those regulations. We've been doing this for 32 months now. We have, as you know, filed the ZRD. It was denied. We've appealed the ZRD. That was denied. We came to the board. We've had three or four hearings. I think we're ready to have you, frankly, uphold our permit application. If there's anything else that we can do to, to, to further bring this point home, we'd be happy to do it, but I think we have, and we can continue to scour the city, but we're just going to find the same things we've already found.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
I, I think I, just to comment, I think when we are looking at a monopole as presented here with the gaps and they would appear as separate thing, I, I just want to, at least in my mind, I, I think this is not how we're going to see the sign. We're going to see the sign while in motion. And it would make a, the, the 12-inch gap, I, in my mind, at least when I'm driving by at that distance of over 200 feet, it's going to be a line. It's not going to be as distinctly as it's shown here, the difference.
But we can't get into whether it's 12 inches or 30 inches.
I, I agree with you. I, I just, I agree with you. It's just that it's then, it's what then are we looking at? Are we looking at each one of these a sign? Are we looking at it in its totality?
Yeah.
It's a perception. That's.
Right. But you can't have it hinge on whether it's 12 inches, but if they moved them 35 inches apart, then.
Right, or, or, excuse me, or 3, I'm sorry, Chair, 3,000 miles, 300,000 miles, when it comes to the moon.
Well, I think the moon, you get an exemption.
It's a celestial body. So once again, I, I think we've done all we can.
Okay.
Our submissions, I think, speak for themselves. We would be happy to, if we need to, continue to provide something in writing, but I respectfully ask the hearing be closed and that, and that this, this board uphold our permit application.
Right. I think it's reasonable that we close the hearing, unless there's other speakers. Are there other speakers who have them presented?
I just, I wanted a clarification question. I, I don't know if you can answer this. Probably DOB maybe better suited to answer this, but just wanted to know whether in permitting the monopole, they're also permitting the horizontal structures that hold the signs? Is that included in the monopole?
It absolutely is.
Or is it not?
I'll let the department speak, but I believe it is.
Okay.
It's all part of the, all part of the single structure.
Okay.
That's, that's correct.
So no matter how many horizontal pieces you have.
You can't, you can't have a conversation unless he identifies himself and comes to the mic.
Identify yourself for the, for the record here. So.
Andrew Wallace again for the Department of Buildings.
So you could have multiple horizontal pieces that are on one monopole. You would consider that one structure?
Yes, Commissioner.
So then that's one structure, two signs, which is not what you've been telling us. You've been telling us it's always one structure equals one sign, and now you're acknowledging that it's one structure equals two signs down there. That one.
Right.
Yeah, that one.
No, that, that. Cause it makes a difference, right, to your, to your argument. So again, I'll pose it again. Well, in this instance, you, I have one monopole and I have two outriggers. Let's say I had three outriggers. Let's say I had four outriggers. You're saying that there, that, that entire assembly is permitted as one structure. So you're, then you're telling me one structure, one sign, but that's not necessarily the case if I've got, as he's pointed out here, I have two signs. And I think the department acknowledged that there are two signs, but you're telling me it's still permitted as one structure. So I, I, confused.
It is permitted, it is, it has one permit, but structurally it has more than one structural element. So I think that's what the.
Counselor, did you ask a question? I want to just repeat. Is your contention that this is a single structure with multiple signs on the single structure? Or that it is multiple structures? And if so, are there multiple permit?
It would be multiple structures.
But that's not what you just said. Five minutes ago, you said that was one structure with a couple of outriggers on it. So I'm concerned here that now you're morphing your definition to fit what happened here, which is inconsistency from your previous argument, which has been my question all along. It's, I'm not seeing consistency here. Cause you just said that one monopole with horizontal outriggers would still be one structure. And here, we have acknowledged that that is one permitted structure. And yet there are two signs. So that's against your original argument of one structure equals one sign, which leads me to think that you don't have a standard here that you're applying across the city. That's a problem.
Can, and can I just follow that up? So in the case of the back-to-back signs that are covered in the surface area, back-to-back or triangular or whatever, is that permitted as two signs? Though I know for surface area, you only count one side? Or is it permitted as one sign?
Who'd have?
Okay, so, cause that's one monopole, one structural system onto which two clearly separate signs are mounted. Cause they face different ways. You don't have to necessarily know the answer, but that's what we want to know the answer to.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Felicia Miller for Department of Buildings.
Um, I just want to clarify that, that's the, first of all, it's a monopole is, may have been permitted as one, but it's, the question here is, is the structure that we're talking about is the grid. And think back to the lay understanding of what is a sign, when you look around the city when the zoning resolution was written, you know, whether it be the Pepsi Cola sign with the Pepsi bottle and the word Pepsi, you know, on a rectangle, or whether it be the History Channel or any, I mean, there are numerous, numerous examples. We're looking at that rectangular grid. It's the grid that's the, that we're talking about. When we say it's the structure, it's not the question of what has been permitted. The permitting process may not be what is a zoning sign, but the understanding of a sign is that grid.
But you went to great lengths to tell us that about the monopole.
It's the structure. It's the structure is what we're focusing on.
And the structure on the monopole and that that structure on the monopole was one sign. But now I have a couple of the same sorts of structures and you're even permitting it as two signs or three signs.
Yes, if they're back-to-back, we would say there are two signs on one monopole.
But one above the other on the same, facing the same direction, I'm, I, I'm getting a disconnect between the argument of one structure, one sign, and having sort of these outriggers that you're permitting as separate signs and you've, but you've permitted the structure as one thing. So I, I understand that how it's, believe me, I get how, the difference between how something's permitted and then how something is, what is really supposed to be built. But in this case, it's causing a real disconnect and a real confusion because, yeah, you're, you're telling us that.
There could be a structure on top of a structure, on top, on top of the monopole or connected to the monopole.
So anything connected to the monopole is considered a structure and it, and.
Not anything, no?
No.
Something specific.
The structure, think back to the classic, you know, examples that we have around when there were billboards and you didn't deal with LED lighting or a different, you know, digital, you know, possibilities. It was the, that rectangle, that grid. And that grid could be, if it was, if you have two of these grids separated with a structure below it, then maybe it's lighting or some other, you know, clear separation between those two grids, then we would accept them as being two structures for purposes of a sign definition.
So I think by counsel's, I think what you're saying is if this sign that we're looking at in the middle panel here, if it was the History Channel sign mounted twice, you'd have, you'd have one monopole and two structures. The history, by your argument, the History Channel sign on the top would be one structure and then a separate sign on the bottom would be a structure, even if there were disparate components on each of those signs.
And regardless of whether they're mounted to the same monopole.
That's the contention?
I think I'd like to see exactly what you're talking about before I gave that answer. But the fact that it's on a single monopole and it may have been permitted as one doesn't dictate necessarily whether the grid that's coming off of it is, there could be more than one grid. It is possible. And if it gets, you know, we'd have to, there are different variables, perhaps we'd have to take a look whether it became one, if they were more connected, but if they were distinct, if they were each separate distinct grids, then we would probably accept that it would, could be, could be two.
Okay, so is the sign that they just put up behind you, one grid or multiple grids?
Which one are we looking at?
The dark one.
The express sign.
There are seven permits here.
But what, but structurally, what is that? Is it a giant structure?
I don't know what the structure is. We'd have to look at the, at that. I can't give an answer here on that.
I, I have to admit, it's hard to see from the photograph whether we're looking at a giant single structure or whether it's got a lot of different elements to it. That's hard to see.
There doesn't appear to be any structural element between here, so it just seems to be separate structures affixing.
But the one above, the three above were, was actually five above.
Five above look like they're hanging from the same structure. The lower one looks like, could be affixed to the building. I mean, it's hard to tell.
Yes, right.
But certainly the, the five above look like they're hanging from a single structure.
Should I remember that?
Displaying a coordinated message.
Yeah. I mean, that, that would be something we'd have to look at more closely and see what, what, how it was presented.
All right, so, okay, thank you. Thank you. Did you want to add something, Mr. Corb?
No, I think the commissioners have appropriately asked the, the pointed questions necessary. I would just point out that this has been in our submission for several months now, so.
Right. No, it's just that the reason we're back here talking about all this stuff again is because there was new material submitted.
Right, and, and, and new theories and new words and, I understand.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, so I do think it's a good idea for us to close this again, and so what I would like is a briefing from both sides based on this new information. And if there's additional, let's say, support that we've discussed already, in other words, don't bring up a whole new theory.
Yeah, please.
But, but for additional data to support this existing theory, you can submit that, okay? So like we asked about the Bay Mall sign and whatever else, more information on these structures, that kind of thing, okay? So.
The commission needs a monopole for future presentation. Otherwise, we're going to get it added here, which is quite hard. Do you have one?
That's three structures, right?
It's one structure that's.
No, it's three structures.
As many individual signs as you need to. The commission cannot accept the sign.
That would be considered a monopole gift.
Not since you're attempting a gift and it, it's not to be taken back.
Is it on, on $100? That's a pretty big part.
We want them to have another hearing.
I thought it's seven calls.
We don't need to take it with us.
Okay, briefing schedule. Three weeks to submit from, submits from.
It's a lot of orders. Same, same time.
Oh, that's why we're going to do this together.
This is a final submission of everyone's argument. The record is closed. It'll be one sort of closing, sort of a post-trial memo for lack of a better term. Everyone can consider, and then they'll be decided.
Is that, is three weeks enough time?
Certainly is for us.
So let me just work back.
Can we do four if that's possible?
Two, three. So it's eve, what? So it's either April 13th for a May 3 decision, or it's, one, two, three, April, April 27th for a May 17 decision.
I would very much appreciate May 3. Could you do the April 27?
So what, what is it actually? So it's April, what do I say, April 13th? That's only one, that's three weeks. He needs three weeks. That's three weeks, April 13th.
Okay, that, that's fine. April 13.
April 13th, May 3 decision.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion to close?
For a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Artley-Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda.
Aye. Thank you. I really appreciate how prepared everyone was for this, over-prepared even. No, that was good. No, no, over-prepared is way better than under-prepared.
Am I calling the next case?
Yes.
Unless anybody, does anybody need a break? No, okay, so far so good. Keep going. Continued hearing items, item number 11, 300-08A, 3935, 27th Street, Queens. Be careful with that thing.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Marvin, missing the applicants. Just to update you on the progress of our efforts, we do have a report from Green New York Corp., who's a contractor, indicating that all the site safety work has been completed.
Okay.
And there's been, and so has the work done, most of the work done with respect to the, the neighbors' properties. I do have a photograph that I can show. We'll make a formal submission, but I do have photographs.
So you said all site safety work has been done or most?
We have, we have contacted Best to schedule an inspection. We expect to get an inspection within the next week or so to verify that. So that we are, we are now at the point, I believe, where we can begin actual construction once we get the approval from this board.
Okay.
With respect to the, with respect to the neighbor's property, uh, one of the neighbors, Vienna Ferri, has sent an email to the board. I believe you received it yesterday or late yesterday.
Oh, no, we got a letter from Susan Bulger.
This morning.
From Susan Bulger. Vienna.
That's a different one. Susan is a different one.
Oh, I can see Vienna.
Well, there's a copy of the, I can leave it with you.
Okay.
But essentially she says for the last several weeks, Green Construction has been working diligently to correct all the safety issues at the above-site addresses. Green Construction employees are very neighborhood-friendly and are working extremely hard to get this site in safe shape. She says, she goes on to say, I want to say that I definitely see a lot of changes with this contractor and safety of the workers and a great deal of neighborhood respect. They are continually sharing what is being done on a daily visit and call so we, the neighbors, know what is going on on any given day. It's mind-easing for us to have a competent, well-managed, safe, and most of all, a caring group of workers that makes this construction site bearable. That's from the neighbor that's closest to the construction activity.
What's the name of that neighbor? Sorry.
Vienna, Vienna.
Sorry?
Vienna Ferri.
Ferriari.
There's also another correspondence from Susan Bulger. I think that's the one you're referring to that we see this morning.
We got that one.
No, I didn't see it though.
Well, she says she's happy to let the board know that, that the repair work on her, on her shed was, was done in terms of the concrete underfooting. Uh, we, we did shore up the, the foundation wall to allow that work to, to commence, and that has been completed. She says in her, in a letter, she says, the garage foundation was stabilized and repaired. She also talks about, um, the two items that remain as far as her work is concerned. One is purchasing the actual shed, which is a prefab structure that she's going to pick out and then we'll install it, and then a fence that has to be installed. Those are the only two open items.
Great.
The letter goes on to state, we reiterate, being that the garage and shed work are done, the bulk of the undermining damages is thankfully now behind us. Therefore, Commissioners, I ask that you refrain from factoring the remaining next steps into your decision on whether to grant Mr. Beristani's time extension today, as I am confident that we will address them within the next week or so. She then says later on, it is my sincere hope that Mr. Beristani be allowed to resume his project as soon as possible. I think with the support of the two neighbors who are concerned about the activity, I think it's clear to this board, should be clear to this board, that we've gone to great lengths by removing the prior contractor, installing a competent contractor, by doing all the site safety work required, and by, uh, doing the repair work to the neighbor's property, that we are now in a position where we should be allowed to complete construction of this project.
Okay. So you're going to submit to us though?
I'll submit.
The, the, the status report, right? Like you have a best squad inspection that's supposed to be happening shortly?
That's correct.
And, um, some kind of submission telling us what's actually been done so we have the record complete, right?
We'll have a letter from, we'll have, we have a letter, I have a letter here.
Okay.
From the structural engineer saying that all the site safety work has been completed.
Oh, okay. Which was not submitted yet.
It hasn't been submitted, no.
Okay. Great.
And they'll have photographs showing the, the extent of the work. As well as you have the letters from the two neighbors.
Great. Um, are there any questions from our side? Are there any questions from our side? Is there any, are there any speakers on this? No? Okay, great. So I think we can close? Yay!
Okay. I haven't asked for it, but thank you.
Thank you for your diligent pushing. Years in the making, but nevertheless, I'm glad to hear that we have a safe site now and that even the neighbors are happy. That's amazing compared to what, where we started.
Mm-hmm.
So, for a motion to close?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And how much time to get us that letter? When do you expect the inspection, or you don't know?
We don't have a date yet. I was told probably a week or two.
Okay. So can we set a, a decision date for a month? Would that be, or we could do it sooner, but I don't want to do it before we have the best inspection.
Best sign-off first.
Yeah. I just want the, I just want the best inspection in our pockets.
October 19th?
19th?
Counselor, do you believe you can have the inspection before then? You're confident?
Yeah.
There isn't a, there isn't a hearing on the 19th. It would be the 26th or the 12th. The 26th probably more likely, right? Okay, so let's set a decision date for the 26th. Even if you get your best inspection on, like, the 25th at 5:00, that's fine. Okay? But you'll submit everything else that you can by April 6th.
Yes.
Okay? And the inspection as soon as you have it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item number 12, 14115A through 15515A, Chevers Lane and Geigerich Avenue, Staten Island.
Is there anyone?
Hello, good afternoon, Eric Palatnik.
I believe we got the revised drawings right now?
Yes, you should have.
Yes, so they coordinate with everything? We're good? Final set of drawings? Yes?
Yeah.
Do we need to hear from fire department, or we're good? That, a nod from fire department, everything's good? Okay, so are any issues open? Any speakers on this? So I think we can make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And for a motion to grant?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
New cases, item number 13, 10610715A, 149th Street, Queens.
Good afternoon, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and we apologize for the confusion. It's a GCL 35, not a 36. There was originally an objection issued in our Department of Buildings, and although we got the secondary objection, which was the correct one for a GCL 35, just a building in the bed of the map, but on built portion of Ash Avenue, we did not revise our paperwork to remove the original objection erroneously issued to the GCL 36. So we will submit that. Also, the project architect is here with us today if you need to speak to him. The builder's pavement plan, I know there's a question by the board yesterday, the builder's pavement plan has been amended to match the Board of Standards and Appeals' submittal. There wasn't a consistency between the two. That's been amended. I have copies of it with me here today. I don't suppose you'd want to see it right now, but we can submit it after the hearing for your records. So we'll be happy to amend both documents for the board.
Great. And then, community board recommendation?
We're working on getting a copy of that right now.
And we need DOT. And what?
You don't have DOT yet?
We don't have DOT. We don't have DOT. It's, we'll, we have to get that, but at the same time, there's, sorry, there was a house in that spot, or even, yeah, so it's not like-
Critical.
They condemned the house or anything. Okay. Right, so I, I don't expect any issues. Okay. Are there any other comments on this? Are there any speakers? Okay, so we can close this and as long as you submit, how much time do you need to submit?
We can submit in three weeks.
Okay. So for a motion to close?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay, so if you could submit April 13th or for a May 3rd decision?
Thank you.
Item number 14, 21815A, 428 St. Mars Place, Staten Island. Still waiting for DOT.
Good afternoon, Eric Palatnik. I understand we're still waiting for DOT. Thank you, Ms. Mathias. We attended your review session yesterday. We understand you were basically satisfied with the application. We agree to the fact that we'll add to a note to the drawing regarding the patio, that you'll be sure to view the covered patio and ensure that it complies with the zoning code.
And that the trash-
And that the trash be stored internally.
Yeah. Okay. So, and again, with respect to DOT sign-off, there is an existing house right there in that spot?
Yes.
Okay. So are there any speakers on this? Any other comments from commissioners? No? Okay, so we can close this?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Do you want to do this on the same schedule?
Yeah, that'll be great.
Okay, so that's a submission on a, what did I say?
April 13th.
April 13th for decision on May 3rd.
Thank you. Thank you for your time today.
Okay, keep going. What? Keep going?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We're going to call some cases out of order.
Who's case?
Zoning calendar, item number 18. Yes? Item number 18, 30-14BZ, 6101, 16th Avenue, Brooklyn.
How are you? It's not an excuse just to get out early. I think. We'll see.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session. I'd like to take your comments one by one and see where we go from there. With regard to the status of the Maple Lanes construction across the street, we took photographs yesterday.
Thank you. Run away. No, just give it one person. Just give, give it a hand. Thanks. Oh.
As you can see, it's a-
Rats. I was hoping it was a little taller than that.
The construction is, is underway. Permits were issued, and the foundation walls and cellar were, have begun, and a substantial portion of it has been, has been done. So it is a project that is, is ongoing and will be completed and will rise to 70 feet when it is completed directly across the street from the proposed building. So we feel, again, that, given that height and given the height of the schools along 16th Avenue, it is within-
So it's a vacant clearing site?
You can see on the, if you look at what I'm facing at the left-hand side, that's a new foundation wall that they poured already, and that they've, it's construction that's ongoing and underway. This is a rezoning that spent years before city council. It was pushed through to make housing, and it is something that is going to be completed within the next two years for sure.
Might you have a relationship, or the school have a relationship with the-
You want a letter of intent? No problem.
Letter that they're funded, that they're building, that their construction schedule is the following, because we're relying on this building-
I will do what I can.
...to establish their character. This absence of a building.
I will, I will do what I can. There is significant work on it.
Whoever's been posted for the purposes of the zoning challenge, is that sufficient? The construction drawings?
No, I've already looked at that. If the thing is, projects get abandoned, you know, or never go ahead, or whatever.
This is an extremely hot area that's in desperate need of housing. If this gets abandoned by one developer, it's going to be snatched up quickly by another. I'll work on getting a letter from the developer or community representatives that are intimately familiar with the project. With regards to the cellar and the MICFA access, so I believe there was a little bit of confusion yesterday when we were reviewing the plans. So if you'll turn to me, turn with me, please, to page two of our plans, you'll see that the, the access to the MICFA is a describing statement of facts. The Congress, the people who are coming to the MICFA will enter on 62nd Street, go into that waiting room. They'll be called in to go to their changing room, go to the bath, and they'll exit through a separate, a separate exit along 61st Street. The entrance on 62nd Street has a handicap lift. The handicap lift that is proposed at the first floor along the 61st Street side only goes to the first floor and accesses the elevator to the rest of the building. That elevator does not go down into the MICFA. Their handicap lift on 62nd Street will give you access. When you look at the plans, there is, it does look like handicap lifts at two of the baths. That's actually handicap lifts to get people into the baths, because there are steps to go down into the baths.
Let me just get to the drawing.
If you look, when you're looking at the plan, the left-hand side of 61st Street, there's a bath number one has the handicap symbol also with the handicap lift, and bath number three also has the handicap lift. So it's not a handicap lift to access the upstairs or from access to the street to this area. It's access, it's a handicap lift to get into that pool.
Bath number three is a handicap lift?
And bath number one also has that lift.
Bath number-
The top left corner.
Top left? Okay, has a handicap lift. So, but when you go to the first floor, there's a handicap lift?
That's the entrance to the MICFA is on 62nd Street. There's a handicap lift to get you into the facility.
Sorry, which is 62nd Street?
The right-hand side of the plan.
The right or the le, the left-hand side of the plan?
When you're looking at the plan, the right-hand side has a staircase and a lift.
So, but there's on, sorry, I don't, I can't look at the plan at the same time.
There is another lift, the handicap lift at the first floor. That was in response to the board's questions from the last hearing.
That's only to get to the MICFA?
That's to get to the main floor to the elevator which takes you to the school. That elevator will not, does not access the MICFA.
So what you're saying is, that's a, that's sort of like a half-stop lift that takes you up to the elevator level?
And that's the most direct and shortest route to get to the elevator that accesses the entire building.
Okay, and that by just strange coincidence, right underneath it is another handicap lift?
Well, it's a handicap lift in the pools. It's not a handicap lift for access to the facility.
Right.
It's like if you're in the swimming pool, that you have a handicapped person that needs to get in the swimming pool.
But it just happens to be on top of the other handicap lift, so you're-
Right. It's just by, by coincidence, and that's the clarity I hope I provided you with.
Okay. So then, if we're talking about the separation of the kids from the adults?
First of all, the hours of operation of the MICFA never, even in the, in the dead of winter, will never overlap with the school.
Schools have-
And there's no, and there's no access from the MICFA directly to the school.
There's no access, so the only way to get into the MICFA is that staircase that's in the parking area?
What is now the parking area? There's one staircase, and then there's another staircase on the 62nd Street side with the handicap.
Sorry, staircase on the-
This, this building, it's important to remember, has three frontages, 16th Avenue, 61st Street, and 62nd Street. So when you look at the building, you're facing six, you're looking at the building from an aerial view. 16th Avenue is on the bottom of the page, 62nd Street to the right, 61st Street to the left. The operational plan is that the women who come, because of the, the request for modesty and the, the tenet of modesty surrounding the MICFA procedure, the women will come in on 62nd Street, go through the ritual, and leave on 61st Street. The handicap, a handicap person, there's a handicap lift on 62nd Street, they'll utilize that as, as access to this facility.
Okay. But there's no other access?
To the school?
No, to the MICFA. Where, I don't understand. So there's the access from 62nd Street where there's the handicap lift and a flight of stairs?
And then there's stair A on the 61st Street side which goes straight up.
Stair A, is that an egress stair, or is that an access stair?
That would be the egress to go straight. It goes straight to the outside along 61st Street.
Okay. Says down to south. Okay. Okay. All right, keep going.
Okay.
Thank you.
With regards to the comment with the intermingling of seminary students and, and the high school students or the, the elementary school students, we heard the board's concerns, and just looking at the plans peripherally today, I can discuss it with the architect, I will propose to the architect to sort of separate that fifth floor where the seminary is delegated to one side and access to that side is only for the seminary, and the high school will be on the other side. You notice on the room utilization, there's a computer room that's strictly for the seminary use, so we can incorporate that into the seminary portion of this floor and limit through the creation of doors, of, of doors and things like that, separation between the two uses.
How are you going to do this?
It's very simple. If you draw, the, the building is in an L shape, you can almost draw a line down the center of the-
You're going to have separate toilets? You're going to have a separate-
There already are. If you look at the layout of the floor, if you look at the layout of the floor, it already is separated that it's, it should not, it should be feasible. And that way, we can have the seminary utilize one door and not have access to any of the others, the other-
Separate elevator?
There is an elevator on that side as well.
Except for cafeteria, right?
Except for cafeteria, but we can, but we can implement safeguards, door locks, things of that nature, which would prevent the co-mingling of, of the uses.
What about the home ec room?
The home ec room is used on a, on a very regimented schedule. We can locate it right next to the seminary so that the students don't have to traverse the entire floor to get to it. They'll use it, and when they're done, they'll go back into the seminary area, and the same for the high school. It's important to remember, the seminary girls are 18 years old, and they were in school with these high school-
They're adults.
They're-
They're non-faculty adults mixing with 12-year-olds.
Again, I, I ask that I'll, I'll attempt to separate the uses and, and present it to the board to see if we can come to a safeguard that is acceptable and a safeguard that does maintain the separation between the uses.
Good luck. Okay. I mean, I see that there's this elevator, no, but there's an elevator being constructed for the new addition, which you cannot devote to seminary use because you need it for the new addition.
There are two elevators. There are two elevators.
And there's an elevator for the existing, for the main building which you can't devote to seminary use because it's the main building. And then, so you have adults riding in the elevator who don't work for the school, riding in the elevator with nine-year-olds. That's not cool.
I, I request time to come up with an operational plan presented to the board and we'll try and come to a resolution of this. I think that it is, that it is something that we can work with and, and come to.
Okay.
With regard to showing the height of the bulkheads on the elevations, we can do that, not a problem. Trash rooms, I'll compile data to show how we got to these figures and explain the operation of trash removal and storage and things of that nature. Pedestrian analysis, the seven, the only students that are in our traffic analysis that are walking are the seventh grade and above who don't get accompanied by parents. So that's why there's no parents included in the pedestrian traffic. All the students are included in the busing, that's as part of our traffic analysis.
But except to say that we asked the traffic consultant to treat this as if it was a new use, right? Because otherwise, then you're just looking at the delta between the...
You did.
Right, but not with respect to parents. So if you looked at all the buses, now there are 18 buses, right, to, to service this place. So parents are gonna be arriving with children, so if you're gonna do an analysis based on pedestrians, it has to be all the grades, including the parents.
The analysis we did took into account the entirety of the school, all of the students at capacity.
Right.
We didn't do a split, we redid the study to include all the grades. All the younger students up to grade seven will be bused. So there are no, there are no parents walking those students to school.
Okay.
And grade seven and above don't, generally do not have parental supervision when walking to school. So therefore, the, there are no parents in this study because we don't anticipate parents. I know the concern last time was 600 parents walking their kids to school. We won't, it, it doesn't present itself based on the model and based on this, based on the operational plan of the school. With regard to the, to the actual traffic study, so just as a point of clarification, there are 11 buses for the first through sixth grade, and there are eight buses for the younger students. Those buses don't come at, at the same time, they are on a schedule. So with my other schools, and I can put this, I have it in my statement of facts and I can provide you with additional details. The way this works is the school, the buses are monitored, they have a teacher on the bus, there's a teacher on the street when the buses arrive. Additionally, every bus is equipped with GPS which is monitored by a faculty member in the building. When the buses come, they're designated to a specific spot. The beauty of this building is there's no parking on all three frontages, and there is sufficient parking to park 11 buses at the same time so that you don't have the problem of staggered where we have with other schools where you have three buses come in, they leave, get radioed. Here, the buses have a designated spot and park their buses and drop off their students. When the 11 buses from the first through sixth grade leave, eight of those buses will do the second run to pick up the younger students. They'll come back and again have designated spots for their parking. So I can, I can provide you with, I guess, a little more detail on this. It is in my statement of facts, but that's the general operational plan with this school as with most schools.
Okay. So in the, in other applications, we have a very, very clear operational plan that talks about at what time which bus arrives and all of that.
I can give it to you.
So we need that because it's gonna be incorporated into the, into the...
I've given it to you, not a problem.
Okay.
With regard to the questions for air quality, we received that letter a little less than a week ago. We're working on the responses and we'll submit it to Mr. Levy so it can go to DEP. And with regard to the noise questions, DEP actually signed off on the noise issues and suggested two conditions which we'll incorporate into our plans. And the last, I guess that actually covers, I think, all of the questions. Commissioner Shonda, your questions with regard to access to the mikvah, I believe we discussed earlier.
I think my question was with the elevator, I was a little confused and I think you may have clarified. So there are two elevators, one that would be accessible from 61st and the other one that would be accessible from the street that's on the...
The mikvah has its own access with its own lift. They don't utilize the school's elevator to get to the mikvah.
There isn't an elevator that goes to the mikvah, it's only the handicap lift?
The handicap lift.
No, no, but I do see a plan in the plan on the ground floor.
It's an elevator pit.
That's an elevator, okay.
Yeah.
I believe that was all.
Yeah, it's, you know what, there should be a note on the drawings that say that that elevator doesn't stop in the basement?
No problem.
Because it's abnormal that it doesn't stop in the basement.
I think it's an existing elevator pit, so they...
No, 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 new, new construction.
I'll, I'll put a note that it's not an access.
Did you mention the lease for the parking?
Oh, I apologize. I will, I will work on a lease or documentation to prove that this will be a parking lot for our school for an identified term.
Documentation as in...
I'll get you a lease or...
A lease, that's the documentation we're talking about.
I'll get you a lease.
Otherwise known as, okay.
Okay.
Oh, I, I think actually Commissioner Shonda, the question was about the elevator being far away from the drop-off point?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually on the same side.
Thankfully, well, there's, the, the question, I apologize, it's, if I wasn't clear, we have the ability to arrange our, our bus parking in a way that if there is, God forbid, a student that has handicap needs, we can put that bus on the 61st Street side so that it does have the most direct, that student does have the most direct access to that elevator for the school.
So in other words, for, for disabled students, there would be a drop-off right in front of the...
Right. Well, right now, thank God, there's no, there's no issue. If the issue does arrive, because of the available parking and because of the very structured way this bus parking drop-off occurs, we can schedule it so that that student or that bus can be dropped off as close to the elevator as possible.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Right. So, any other questions?
Fire department.
Oh, fire department, right?
You know, John Yakel, fire department, it seems to me that there seems to be some egress issues, elevator issues. I would like some sort of a narrative, maybe with a, at least some sort of a drawing so we can send our public buildings unit out to look at this and come up because there are this, you know, there's physically challenged students in the, in the school and I think it would be who us if we would look at it.
Sorry, a narrative about what?
About all of the egress, the configuration, how it's laid out. There seems to be question with exits and entrances, elevators.
Okay, the questions that we had have to do with the separation, so there's several uses in the building that involve adults, and we want the adults kept separate from the children. So a lot of the question, all of our questions about access have been about to make sure that the adults and the children don't meet each other ever because, because, right? So it's not a fire department issue per se, it's a, it's a use issue. You're of course welcome to look at how the egress is laid out, but the, but the narrative isn't about fire egress, it's about access for these different uses. Right? So, but what I, but to your point, if you're gonna close off an area for the seminar, seminary, obviously in an emergency, you have to be able to get to the staircases, so I don't actually know how the architect's gonna work that out to the satisfaction of DOB and fire. Right? So it's a, it's an, that's an issue. So, but they haven't done the design yet for separating the use on the top floor has adult students?
Yeah.
On the same floor as children.
Of course, it is an enlargement as well, so that's why I'm...
It's a, it's actually more than, it's a four-story new building effectively.
So maybe after Mr. Goldstein, he...
Well, let him do the, the drawings, he could give us that to the fire department. Yeah, I can just review it. We'll provide you with the drawings, okay?
Okay, fine. Yeah, that, that's good, that's where we can look at it. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay. So are there any speakers on this? Nobody? Okay. All right, so, and any other, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just looking at the roof plan, going back to that other project that we had. And in this one, the, the fence is set back, so there is that landing area. But I'm again curious where the bulkheads would be located and how would this play area then act up? This is being shown its entirety as a play area. Where would the rest of the mechanical systems and everything would be placed that would enable a reasonable play area? That's just a question I had.
Right, right.
I can provide a little more detail. We did, we did, we did intentionally set this fence back a lot at the concern of the board with regard to the perceived height with these fences. I can include the mechanical and, and show the, where it would be and how it would be separated and then...
Right.
That'll, that'll be included with the height of the bulkheads that you asked on the elevations.
Because we have another project where there is so much mechanical on the roof, it's unbelievable. There's, you know, hardly any room for play. So curious, you know, you have an existing building with whatever its mechanical system is. So where is all that stuff?
I'll show it.
Okay. Okay, great. So you have your list, you know what to do or...
I know what to do, yeah.
Okay.
I think air quality might take the longest out of all of this. I'm not, I don't have the schedule in front of me for the hearings, but if I can have submission, maybe in a month.
In a month? So say have it the end of April, maybe that would be, okay. So submission, April 27th for continuation on May 17th?
Okay.
Okay, and we really need information about this site?
I will, yeah. I'll do the best I can.
Okay, thanks.
And the next case is... Two, two, new case, 252-15BZ, 1120 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Wait, sorry, what number is that?
Number four, new case.
Very last.
Number four, 252-15BZ, 1120 East 24th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session. I'd like to discuss the, the comments one by one, answer any other questions you may have. The question with regard to the front, the existing front of the home, the sand board maps will show this as an existing one-story structure from the 1930s through today. We did, there was this enlargement at the second story which we found out about after we purchased the property, and it is gonna be removed as part of this application. But I, I don't understand the question with regard to the existing front yard because if you look at the sand board maps and the, the street scape, all of these homes have the same depth of the front yard.
No, but you, if you actually look at the part of the building itself, it's very clear that the front, the first story was enclosed. It's clear from the building typology that that was a porch, plus the sand board map shows it dashed. So that's, that was it's...
The first or the second floor?
On the first floor. So the sand board map shows a dash, that's the symbol really for a porch. So my question had to do with how do you establish that enclosing an existing non-compliant porch, or maybe it was enclosed prior to 1961, that's another subject, and legally, right?
Right.
How do you establish that that enclosure is a sort of grandfathered as an, and you're not creating a new non-compliance?
So maybe I need clarity on, on reading the sand board because when I'm looking at this, it all has, the, the house next door to us has a two, that the front yard has a two-story extension and has the same dash that we have.
Right.
So...
So that was a porch that was enclosed, if that's what happened there? But we're actually not talking about that one, we're talking about this one?
No, I'm trying to compare apples to apples to read the...
Right, but if you look at an image of the building, it's very clear that that strange white thing...
At the second floor?
No, at both floors. It's clear by looking at the, that the structure on the front of the building that that's not native to the original building. So, right? So the, so it was an, it became an enclosed interior space, right?
Right.
So if it did that legally, or if a porch can be enclosed without creating a new non-compliance, that's research that needs to be done. I, I don't know the answer to that.
So, but the, if there are no DOB records on this, because this is assumed on our part that the first floor, like the rest of the block, was always in existence, and we agree and we, we accept the fact that the second floor was the illegally built-out portion. There are no DOB records to show that the first floor was ever constructed illegally. If they're assuming there are, how do you prove a condition like that?
So, so it's more like this. What does the zoning resolution say about a porch being a permitted obstruction in a front yard, right? And then, does it say anything or is there DOB information on what happens when you enclose a porch? Like is, does that create floor area that you didn't have before or et cetera?
If it is enclosed, it would create floor area, but our contention is, or my, my position is that this has been in existence forever. Well, I can try and find historical photos to, to try and prove this.
Maybe some tax photos.
Yeah, fine, look for a 40's tax photo.
See if we can find anything that would show the, the front yard the way it was. Because if you look at this block, every home has the same condition. It's hard to believe that every home would have done this illegally and nobody would have said anything.
What do you mean?
I'm naive, I'm still, I'm still young, I'm naive.
I don't believe it for a minute, though.
I'll, I'll try and find photographs from historical tax map photos to, to prove the point. With regard to the second floor, the, the front yard that we're proposing or that we're reverting back to is a 12-foot, 12-foot, 2-inch, we think, and we, we argue that it's a legal non-comforming condition, a non-compliant condition, and therefore it's, it can remain. So the question was asked if we can reduce it by essentially another three feet. In doing that, we lose that laundry area, we do pull back and, and lose a significant amount, a chunk of the front of that second floor.
Wait a minute, you're saying the second floor is a legal non-compliant condition?
The second floor had a, had a build-out. We showed the build-out and we showed the illegal condition and that's what's gonna be reduced. When you looked at the photos, we were able to see the existing front wall with the chimney and we saw exactly where the, the original home existed. That condition is 12-foot, 2-inches from the front yard, from the, from the front of the property lawn. So it's not a 15-foot at the, at the second story, it was a pre-existing 12-foot, 2-inch front yard. So the, we proposed to keep it because that's the legal condition. Again, the board mentioned that that would be a DOB call to prove that that was a legal condition, and therefore, we're proposing to keep it because it is in line with the rest of the block. If you look down the street scape and you look at this block, it does have that first floor enclosure to front yard of about two feet, and then at the second floor, it does have this, while it's a reduced front yard, it does have open porches like we're proposing. So we do feel that this front yard is in keeping with the character of this neighborhood, of this block. The next question, if I may, goes to the extension of this, of the four-foot side yard along the, the...
Just to clarify that, so if you look at a photograph, the house is painted green...
Correct.
And then that front stuff is white, right? So you're talking about the green wall?
The green wall, you can actually see the chimney as well.
Yeah, so the chimney protrudes in front.
And the chimney were the legal front yard of this.
Yes, okay, that's true. So you're saying that's the 12-foot wherever.
That's 12 feet, 2 inches.
Okay.
And that's what we're proposing. We actually dimensioned it on the plans. You can see on the existing plans, it's, it's pretty clear where they just put up three walls and, and closed that porch, so we're, we're removing that. With regard to the question of extending the, the side yard for the four feet, so the board has historically and routinely, most recently I believe was 18214BZ, approved these short, these, these reduced side yards even when it was just a short portion of the building. So in that specific case, the board approved the two-foot, one-inch side yard where that two-foot, one-inch portion was only eight feet out of 45 feet of the, of the entire building. And in that case, the board recognized other precedential cases that the board has approved where small parts of a side yard that do reduce the side yard can be straight-line extended and that counts towards this, and that qualifies for the special permit. Another case that I was able to find is 8213BZ where the board approved a four-foot side yard for, there was only 11 feet out of the 40-foot depth of the house, or length of the house, rather.
At 11 out of what?
Forty. So it's, the board has recognized this condition, has recognized this extension. Additionally, as I mentioned in my statement, this is the, the largest continuous wall, side yard wall of our house. So it is, even though it's a, a fraction of the entirety, it is the longest continuous stretch of our home. If we're forced to reduce this, while some of the portions can be reduced, it would create a notch in the dining room which is part of the proposal, and it would create a non-symmetrical dining room on the first floor. The intent of this special permit was to allow homeowners to enlarge their kitchens, enlarge their dining rooms, and provide bedrooms with, I believe, this condition in mind, where you have a, a side yard, it runs for the reduced width and you can straight-line extend it towards the back to provide these larger symmetrical rooms. So therefore, the board has approved it and the board has recognized even on a smaller portion of these homes, of, of the overall home, that you can just straight-line extend this reduced side yard.
Can you submit those?
Submit those plans, no problem. The one, the first one I created, one I stated 18214, was approved September of 2015. So I can, I can provide you with the approved plans. And the resolutions. The next question was regard to the, the second floor and the impact on the rear yard. So the height of the, or the massing of the second floor, the height of the, of the rear portion of the house is only 30 feet. So this peak of 36 feet doesn't go the entirety of the house, it's only at the center of the house. From the rear of the home, we're set back 18 feet into the middle of the home where it's only 30 feet. So you have a condition of a two-story, 30-foot home that is, that's next to its adjacent homes. So you don't have that 36-foot peak at the rear of your property. So we believe that this condition is, is not as impactful and doesn't create a situation of, of impacting the neighbors. Additionally, the board approved the, for the lot directly behind us, lot 37, there's a, the board approved a 36-foot-high, tall, two-story, 20-foot rear yard house.
But the issue is the impact on the neighbors on either side. That's why we talked about pulling those corners back.
So I can, again, it's...
So the question is always, did you bring the architect so we could have a conversation with the architect?
He had a, he had a DOB appointment and make it, I apologize.
So you know, some of this is like, I really dislike talking about architecture with lawyers, you know, the architects are the ones...
My dad's a structural engineer.
That's your dad, that's so sweet, right?
I'm trying, I understand. We can, we can look at options of reducing it, but we do feel that, on this block specifically, there's another lot, lot 67 was granted a two-story, 20-foot rear yard. The side yards on both sides had, had almost exactly the same situation that we have, and the homes in back of them were only at 20, were at 28 feet, not 20.
But as you know, we're looking at the impact of this project on adjoining properties, so it's not impacting the one that has a narrow, shallow rear yard, but it is the ones on the side, and the architect already made a gesture to one side, so why can't there be a gesture made that would be more than a gesture which reduces the apparent mass? So for instance, even on top of that porch, you still have the full roof height, that doesn't need to have the full roof height. It could be modified to reduce the apparent impact on those adjoining lots.
Which...
The porch, there's a corner porch?
Right, so that's, that's actually...
Which has a roof on top.
That corner porch...
Which goes to...
Does not have a roof on, that corner porch is gonna be open.
According to the elevation, it does. Elevation shows it having a roof.
I think it's just not, it's just not clear, but it's, it's, you can see...
Okay, we'll read drawings.
If you could see on the plot plan, it's supposed to be open, I think. So it's an open porch that retains that 30-foot rear yard off of the master bedroom. And again, the height of this, of this rear portion of the building is only 30 feet, it's not 36 feet.
So something's wrong with the drawing because I don't know how you do that roof line. The roof plan doesn't look like the elevation at all.
I can, I can clarify that point, but I believe that it's, it is in keeping. But again, while I understand the board's point regarding the adjoining neighbors, the, the board did approve lot 67 on this block, where you do have the adjoining lots at 33 and 32 feet, and they gave them a two-story addition to 20 feet. So it's the same situation in our cases significantly better because we are providing one side to be open.
Okay. It would be great if next time you could come with the architect because then we could have a conversation about the building.
Okay. The last question, show the attic floor area, we diagrammed it, I'll, I'll clarify it more. The cellar, we are showing new at the front, we're reducing the cellar a little bit to provide a cutout at the first and second floor for parking space.
Right, but when you look at the existing cellar plan and the proposed cellar plan, now I understand why you have the addition at the front, but it, it, the existing cellar plan supports the fact that, that non-compliant front yard may have only been a porch and not enclosed in the beginning because, you know, there, there's no foundation there in the existing plan.
It for sure, sure was only a porch, it's the building typology, you just look at it and you recognize that it was built, it built hundreds of houses that looked like that for front porch.
So the existing house does not have a foundation on that front portion on the first floor?
I will double-check. It appears to me that it's the existing mechanical room?
No, it's, it's not, it's not close enough to the property line.
I will, I will...
It's probably just supported on some posts, you know?
I'll clarify with the architect. I'll clarify with the architect, no problem.
And then you show a kitchen.
Kitchen, that is a mistake.
Okay. And then just define what you're keeping or the shed in the rear.
So the shed, if you look at the plot plan, we did, we, we reduced it to eight feet by 18 feet. Do you see the, we, we dimensioned it on the plan?
Nope. Don't find it.
If you're looking at the post-plot plan sheet 8-1.
Do some convert.
Oh, 18 feet wide.
Oh, I see.
And by eight, and we leave 12 feet, 10 inches between the house and the shed.
You know why it's impossible to find it? Because it looks like the dimension lines.
Okay.
Or actually, I actually don't even know where the walls of the shed are.
It's, the dimension lines are the dimensions of the shed, so we'll, I can try and clean that up as well.
Yeah.
A question, did you cover the, the other side yard? You've got a new stair to be approved at DOB and I'm wondering if that encroaches in some sort of easement because that's a driveway.
There's no easement.
So.
It's not a shared driveway in this, this is actually where that, where that staircase is, that's where the existing staircase is for the home, which just pulled up a little bit. So that's actually the staircase that we used to get into the house, right?
That's weird because on your photographs on that side, it looks like there's a car parked over there.
That's the neighboring car, there's no fence, the neighbor has about eight feet on his driveway to, for his park. His.
Your drawing just doesn't indicate that way.
If you look at our survey, you can see the, that's the staircase is on our side of the property line, then on his side of the property line, he has 8'11 at the front and then it's deeper at the center of his property.
Okay, yeah, because on your plan, it doesn't show it like that. It shows it actually much closer, so you might want to.
Clean it up.
Just clean that up, yeah.
Okay.
And regarding the parking space, if it is determined that that was an illegal addition on the first floor, you have, you can't have the parking space in the front yard.
Understood. I will find those pictures and I will submit those pictures.
So to speed up this process, you're going to bring the architect here, but the architect should work on reducing the apparent mass at the rear. At the moment, there's a 14-foot-high attic, I don't know why you need that.
That's fine, but again, just point to, to clarify, the, the rear, again, the last 18 feet of the house is only 30 feet tall. The center peak is at the center of the house.
But the apparent mass of the building is, is created by this, you know, if you're next door and you look out and there's something that's effectively three stories tall, you feel the three stories tall. It doesn't have to rise as a sheer wall in order to feel that height, right? And you've got an extremely high attic and I don't know what for because there's nothing shown is inside. So the architect really needs to work on that and instead of coming back with exactly the same thing, you'll make progress if you make modifications to respond to these comments and bring the architect to, to discuss them, okay?
Okay.
Okay, are there any speakers on this? Anybody else, any other comments? Okay, so.
I guess the same schedule as the last case is fine, end of April, April 27th, May.
Okay, so April 27 submission, May 17th, continue hearing? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay, yeah, okay. Actually, it's 2:00, don't you want a break?
Let's do the decisions.
Decisions, oh.
Yeah, because you have the opening right now, right?
Okay. We need a five-minute break?
Just the decisions.
She needs a five-minute break? We'll give her a five-minute break, with sympathy. Where are our decisions? What number?
15 and 16.
Okay, back in the record, the Sony Callan decision items, item number 15, 10114BZ, 1975, 51st Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Moshe Friedman.
So we did get the plans updated with the floor area clarification.
Yeah, somehow it.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. We just didn't know whether the.
It was already calculated in, but somehow one place on the chart was taken care of and another place, but it's all taken care of.
Okay, so then, I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition, so I'll read through the conditions, which you've heard before, but I'll go through. The, the first isn't really a condition, it's just an instruction to staff that the rendering needs to be included in the approved plans. So, but the conditions would be to include in the resolution the description of the arrival and departure times by grade that operational plan was provided to us and the parking of buses during, will be during off-hours in the commercial parking lot at 1625 Surf Avenue, that traffic monitors will be provided to keep no standing areas clear during school arrival and departure times, that the new masonry units at the fifth-floor facade will match the existing. And to note that this is, I don't know how we say this exactly, but this is the maximum expansion on the site possible, after that, time to look for new space. That the trash is to be stored only in, inside of the dry waste storage area and the refrigerated storage area and trash is to be removed at the earliest the night before pickup. I'm not sure exactly how pickup works, but if it's a morning pickup, the night before, okay? Any other conditions? Okay, so we're a motion to grant on those conditions? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you, I want to thank you for your very responsive submission also.
You're welcome, thank you.
Item number 16, 20315BZ, 44 Union Square, East Manhattan. Okay, I recuse from this. Thank, oh, thank you, good luck. I recuse from this option.
Good afternoon, Jeff Mulligan, criminal.
Hello, Mr. Mulligan, thank you. We got the updated drawings with the conditions that we seek to impose on this project. So I, I ask for a motion to grant on condition and I will read the conditions. All deliveries to the subject building shall be made curbside along East 17th Street at the building services entrance and shall proceed through the service corridor. Deliveries may not be left on the sidewalk or anywhere else outside of the subject building. Building management shall, when practicable, schedule deliveries during off-peak hours to avoid pedestrian congestion. Building management shall monitor deliveries and shall be responsible for keeping sidewalks free of hazards or obstructions caused by or related to deliveries. A service elevator shall be installed in order to provide the ground-floor retail tenant with access to the service corridor. All building trash shall remain stored within the building in the designated trash storage room. Trash shall be transferred internally through service corridors and placed on the curbside no more than one hour before scheduled trash pickup. Trash shall be removed from the site six days per week and street trees and, and tree pits shall be installed and maintained as per 2641. So with those conditions, I move to grant.
Motion to, motion to approve, Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are we taking a break now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to resume it.
In a half hour, 20 minutes?
2:30.
Okay.